Call the meeting to order. If I can have everybody rise, say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everybody. I see we have Representative Fogelman in the audience tonight. Welcome. Without further, don't have anything for agenda changes or anything? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Seconded. Okay, we have motion and seconded the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. On to open hearing.
Move to open.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Should I go with this first and then everyone else speak? Should council concur with the special assessment that presented at each of assessment hearings, the corresponding resolution in Exhibit 1, adopting the assessments for the unpaid charges and for the improvements in to be passed? The proposed assessments rule were included in the September 11th, 2023 engineering memo. The recommended terms for the proposed assessments are listed below. Basically, five and a half percent for 15 years, except the miscellaneous unpaid charges. That's five and a half percent for one year.
Okay. Any discussion with that? Okay. We have any testimony on that? Yes.
We should discuss the Cherrywood additions to our water improvement.
Oh, yeah. I have that too. I forgot to put it in the case item here. Deferral of payment was requested by the property owner at the original project public hearing on August 10th, 2020, and the council supported the deferral as it has been done in the past practice. Past practice has been that the council deferred the principal for undeveloped land, but required the payment of the interest each year. The landowner had requested the interest be deferred also. At the meeting approving the assessment, council may levy the assessment, but defer the first installment of the assessment for unimproved property until a designated future year. Section 5 should cover, on Exhibit 1-4, section 5 should cover all the details there.
Okay.
So what council needs to decide, first of all, if this council elects to defer the assessments on the one property known as Hack Acres on the stormwater assessments, because it is undeveloped land, so it qualifies for deferment should council choose to. Past practice has been that council has deferred assessments on undeveloped property. You can defer, you have to state the conditions of deferment, the terms and conditions. Typically, it can be deferred until it is platted or developed, and at no case, the deferment cannot extend beyond 30 years. So if no development occurs at the end of 30 years, the assessments and all accrued interest would be due at that time, or until it meets whatever conditions you decide to defer it to. The other thing is you have the flexibility to defer annual interest payments until such a time as the deferments would end. So those are the conditions that council needs to designate. You would give us staff direction at today's meeting, and then at the next meeting, we would actually bring forward the resolution that would bring those conditions, and then it is filed with that property, so it ends up as a lien on the property, so that in the future, anyone here in staff or council or anyone that would acquire that property would...
And he said past practice is to defer assessments and have interest paid yearly? Is that correct? Is that past practice?
Yep, defer the principal, but paying interest every year of the principal, yep.
If we didn't have them pay the interest then, at whatever time we would choose, if it would be all the way to the 30 years or if it's developed in 10, would that be added on?
Yes, the interest would accrue, it just would not be paid.
Okay.
And we could set the parameters of that being developed or platted or whatever as well, the interest as well?
Correct.
Counsel?
Yes. We'll get to you.
Okay, do we need a motion? Or?
No.
No?
This is just directive, right?
Yes.
Has it ever been done before to defer the interest?
Not that...
Not that I can find right now.
No, I don't think so.
Recommendations?
I don't know why any other precedent should be set. It's never been practiced here before. It's in negotiations for development. By the time the assessment would come around, we very well could have an agreement on that.
Well, we have staff support the deferment until such time as development or plating.
Of principle?
Of the principle, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The interest is the precedent that would be set by doing that, because it's at least on record to knowledge, not been done before.
Yes? Yes, please.
Good evening. I'm Joel Jenkins, and I'm representing Hack Acres LLC. And I know some of you, and some of you, probably the first time you've seen me. But I was of the understanding that the deferral was already in place based on the motion that was made two years ago, and voted on, seconded and voted on. I don't understand why now of a sudden, this council has the opportunity to reverse that council's decision, number one. Number two is it was requested at that time to waive the interest, pay no interest on the deferral until. And it was at that time from my memory that the research was going to be done to see if there had been a precedent. And while I don't have the particulars, I think there's at least two cases that I have become aware of where that precedent has already been set. And if you'd like to talk to me afterwards, or if you'd like me to share it here, that's your prerogative. But there are two principal settings that I think already set the precedent that not only was the interest waived, but potentially even the assessment was waived. And you only have to look real closely at Cherrywood additions history, which I'm privy to. So my concern is that we have this dilemma of, we came tonight thinking we were only going to be talking about the interest, and now all of a sudden, we're talking about the deferral of the actual principal as well. So keep in mind that, you know, the city created a competition between our land and its development by putting 50-some lots or 30-some lots on 50-some acres of city land.
Lena?
I do think that as far as the principal goes, I would, like Chad said, I would say that until the time it's developed, that also we should be deferring the principal. It's the interest that I don't see how we could go ahead, and I think that that would accrue. I don't think that, I wasn't on the council then, but I don't think that there would be a way to waive that. And I don't know the history of Cherrywood, of the development, but I don't see how we could do that.
Regarding your comment about previous action, that was not official action, because those assessments were never officially adopted or certified. Tonight is the night.
Okay.
Okay. I just heard a motion, heard a second, heard a vote, and I felt that was timely. So anyhow, my apologies if I don't understand the Roberts rules here. So thank you for listening, and I would hope that you would understand that I think there are two settings out there that's already set the precedent, and I'd be happy to discuss those with you. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Chad?
I think the directive allows, there's no motion going to be made on this tonight. The directive allows for staff to go and see if there has ever been interest deferred on anything, because no motion's going to be made here on this to begin with, so.
And what were the, if there was?
If there was, then it can be brought back to us and say that there was interest put out there, it was for this reason or that reason or whatever.
And what was the reason, yeah.
And then we can make the decision when action is going to be taken on it. But I'm in favor of deferring the principal for sure, because that's a regular practice that we've done on any developments. If there has been interest done, I'm open to hearing about it. I don't recall it being done in my seven years of sitting here.
I don't recall it either.
But...
And even in, certainly one or two cases, that does not set a precedent. So, I mean, it opens the door, but it certainly doesn't set a precedent.
I would suggest that you meet with our engineering staff after this, and if you have the exact instances when interest deferral or interest forgiveness took place, we can go back through the archives and try and find it, so.
Okay. Very fine, thank you.
Do we have any other testimony?
Anyone from Homewood now?
Yeah, this, yeah.
Hello, I'm Jim Look Francis, 1709 Rush Road, and I don't disagree the workmanship, and we know all that, and I disagree with the fact that we don't want to pay the full assessment, but, and the right ability never was an issue. But I'm here tonight to represent Randy and Terry Jansen, and you all know that the situation, they have not gotten that handicap ramp. They can't be here tonight because of Randy's situation that's going on. So the question they have and ask me to ask you is, why is the handicap ramp not put in yet?
Could you address that, Goo?
I mean, they are...
You know, let Goo talk.
Should have covered this first. Okay, so, um, there's a couple things, we looked at all the list that we received from everybody. Couple things we noticed was that Briarwood and Homewood Hills, that corner, don't know exact, don't remember exact address, but we noticed that curb and gutter settled and was creating a puddle of water there. So we are planning to fix those curb and gutters where it's settled, overall, all neighborhood. And we do have, I don't know why that ADA wasn't included in that project, but we do have separate budget and project listed to complete that ADA and connect those pad ramps and everything. And we have looked at design and everything, but unfortunately, this year was a little too late to begin another project. All the contractors were lined up, couldn't squeeze anything in.
So what's your estimated date of completion for that handicap ramp?
Hopefully, early next year, as soon as the...
Like spring?
Springtime, yes. Yep.
You know, this is the exact timeframe. Beginning of construction season 2024. You won't get a date. There, well, that's exact.
Thank you. Now, you can bring that back to them.
And some of the comments about the aesthetic of the surface, not perfect finish, that's already been addressed by deduction. The comment last year was that 1% seemed very low, but the area that occurred overall, comparing to overall neighborhood, we thought this was reasonable amount that we made a deduction for surface and the, basically for to drag the finish of the concrete.
Yes.
Several of the places, panels, whatever, that some showed some cracking, and those were addressed in the plan to either fix or redo.
And also, liability and those issues were already mentioned at the public hearing prior to all the construction began or even started bid, and that was addressed before, and it was public knowledge at the time. And it was council approved, go with that without curb and gutter replacement. So a liability issue was known before construction began. Yeah, so let them speak for now.
Anybody else testimony? Andy?
Good evening. Andy Johnson, 2330 Cherrywood Lane. Just a couple of quick comments on the assessments that are in front of you tonight. The one on the Cherrywood Lane. My property was there before this development came in, and the one thing I guess I would say is knowing that amenities are a bonus to being as part of a new development, a new neighborhood, I would totally agree with. Some of the things that are not a bonus is the way some of the things have been developed, and I'm not sure I understand most of it, but I know contractors obviously go through a development process and work through things with the city and with the engineering and whatnot. But the way our street is designed in our cul-de-sac is pretty difficult, and I invite anybody to come out and see me this winter. I end up spending hundreds of extra dollars just to get out of my driveway. I can take care of my own driveway, but I can't get out when the street plows come through, and in anywhere from four to eight feet of snow. I've talked to Public Works, they've been very gracious in trying to help out, but the bottom line is, it sounds like it's the design and the equipment that we have that can do no different. So it's just a really bad situation, and there are even days that I'm the only driveway that gets it. So I'm sure you've heard it on cul-de-sacs before, I've talked to a lot of people, but this is not good. My comments on the stormwater is, again, me being the property that's been there forever, we didn't have a stormwater situation before, and this new development comes in, now we have a stormwater situation, and my drainage of any stormwater has not changed. In fact, the way the development of the land has been, it continues to go further to the east. I go nowhere near or have water coming off into the stormwater. I've talked to, Steve Robinson was very gracious to help me walk through this, I think in December of '20, we tried to understand a little bit more, because I knew nothing about the development of the streets and the stormwater, what was happening. Engineering did check into it, and supposedly, the way that things were drawn up were the way they should be, but nobody's explained to me the way they should be. They've just told me they are the way they are, and you pay this assessment, and there's really nothing that can be done. What I'm here to tell you is, I don't have any stormwater that goes anywhere near, anywhere near the stormwater, and I just need to bring that up for those reasons. Thank you.
Andy, on the snow removal, is your driveway hit the hardest? Is that...
Absolutely.
Of all of them on the cul-de-sac?
Absolutely.
And we met, and unfortunately, my memory is not as good as yours, we met a long time ago about the stormwater plan, and I can't recall any of the details or what...
Well, yeah, we met, you were going to do some research, and Mr. Cedar came on board, and he did some looking into it, and then, you know, sent me an email just saying that the designs were the way they should be based on what he could see. But again, I don't know what that means, except that they come up with a percentage of what you're going to pay, whether you like it or not, and, you know, my water doesn't run anywhere but to the east into the city park, like it always has been, so.
Is the snow removal a process of how the cul-de-sac is done?
Yeah, I've talked to Andy about this a bunch of times. Unfortunately, when we go into plow, we have to just kind of go around in a circle, and it's a much larger cul-de-sac. There's not a lot we can do. We're going to try to see if we can come up with a solution. It shouldn't be just that his driveway gets more than everybody else's, everybody should get the same. Whether that's the way my guys plow or whatever, we've talked about that last winter, like I said, me and Andy, Andy's been really good to deal with, and I'm trying to help him out. I don't want him to have any more snow than other people, so we'll see what we can do. Can't go out there with a loader and clean out the end of his driveway, because then we'd be doing that all the time, but we'll try to work with him the best we can.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Any other testimonies out there? Any discussion from council? Okay.
I guess I would say thank you for your feedback. Yeah, it's good to hear.
Thank you. Going to the... Need to close the hearing for the...
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Opening, next.
Action on the hearing.
Action on the hearing, okay.
There's five.
Act on each resolution individually.
And one that we were just talking about, that deferment was Exhibit 1-4 resolution. If council were to pass that as well or put it aside?
Yeah, we want directive to look into on the deferment.
Yeah.
So we'll take up that resolution at the next meeting.
Yep.
Do you have the, name off the first resolution that needs to be acted on, Goo?
Is it six...
1-1.
Yep, 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, 1-5.
To approve the resolution 1-1.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
To pass 1-2?
A motion?
I would move to approve 1-2.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And to pass Exhibit 1-3 for paving improvement number 1164 Cherrywood Lane, surface pavement.
Move to approve 1-3.
Okay, we have motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And Exhibit 1-5 for paving improvement number 118 for Homewood Hills.
One thing I would say is, I think you need to make sure that everyone knows of the improvement list and the things that were discussed after their comments were put in, and then what was assessed after those comments were gone through, to know what things are going, because there are things, some things that are going to be fixed and done on that. I think that should be a copy made available to those people, especially those that took the time and came here for attendance.
Yep.
Like what you've already done and what's going to be done yet.
Correct. What was done, what was then viewed as not acceptable, and what's going to be done about that.
Sure.
Not everything, not everything, as you heard in some of that, and I want to bring it up, because we've had several meetings on this, and there are quite a few people here, not everything is going to be redone by any means, because the actual life and structure of it, the integrity is still there. There are things that are going to be done on settling, on some of the cracking, on the handicap accessibility, some of those things are going to be fixed and done on that. So I do want people to know that we have been given a full list. It was in the meeting minutes, which can be found, I know, online and everything, but just so, it wasn't, in the hearing wasn't made completely clear, that there was a list that was heard after our last group of meetings on Homewood Hills, that was gone back over, looked at, and then assessed, and a list of things to be completed was done, so.
And then approximate timelines for that, projected timelines for it?
Just so everyone realizes, some of the things that are going to be addressed out there were never in the original improvement plan. Like the handicap accessible crosswalk.
Yep, handicap will be spring, but fixing that curb and gutter, we'll have to actually go out there and take a shot, since it's such a flat area, we'll have to be more detailed, so that will take a little bit more time. It won't be springtime, but...
Just indicate that, then they'll know.
Yep.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve 1-5. Is that correct?
Yep.
1-5.
Okay, motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Done with the closed hearing. So we're moving on to the consent agenda, okay. We've got consent agenda, we've got regular city council meeting minutes of September 25th, 2023, board minutes, planning commission meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2023, water and light commission meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2023, planning commission meeting minutes of September 5th, 2023, LEC joint powers meeting minutes of September 19th, 2023, housing and redevelopment authority board meeting minutes of September 11th, 2023, housing and redevelopment authority board meeting minutes of August 30th, 2023, and application to conduct off-site gambling, three town and country boosters incorporated, and bills payable.
To approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, first item of business under administration is resolution calling for the sale of bonds for sales tax and improvement projects. Attached to Exhibit 2 is a proposed resolution for the city of Worthington to call for the sale of two general obligation bonds to reimburse the city for certain expenditures from the proceeds of these bonds. If the resolution is adopted, the city's municipal advisor and bond attorney will begin preparing documents for the sale of bonds on November 13th. Sales tax bonds are for financing various sales tax projects in the estimated amount of $5,140,000. The improvement bonds are for financing street improvements in the estimated amount of $4,090,000. Rebecca Kurtz with Ellers is here that will present the... the information on the, uh, proposed bond sale that, uh, will be coming up here in, in, uh, in about a month. So, Rebecca, thank you for joining us once again.
Absolutely. Again, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. Um, as presented in your packet, I do believe there is a, or two, pre-sale reports, one for each bond issue that just outlined, so I'll be just, um, doing some highlights from that. Um, as presented, the Series 2023A bond is for the $5,140,000, um, general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, um, for reimbursement for the aquatics facility. Um, debt service on those will be paid through the sales tax revenue. We are estimating that debt service would be about $600,000 annually. Um, for that issue, we would have the term of 11 years, so the final payment would be February of 2035. That is tied specifically to ending the sales tax in 2034 based on the, uh, special legislation that was approved in 2019. For the 2023 bonds, it is the $4,090,000, um, general obligation improvement bonds as stated for the street project. For that issue, debt service will be paid through a combination of special assessment revenue from the benefiting properties, and then the balance will be paid through ad valorem taxes. Um, the term on the improvement bond will be a term of 15 years. So, first, um, principal payment in 2025 maturing in 2039. Um, both of these bonds are general obligations, so while we do have the sales tax revenue and then, um, special assessment revenue pledged to the two bonds, ultimately with age, any general obligation bond, you are pledging your full faith and credit. So in any event that, um, revenues are not sufficient, you would levy taxes to pay any shortfall on that. Um, with both of these bonds, we do have a call date or what it means is a prepayment date. So in February of 2033, you would have the ability to prepay or, um, refinance for interest savings, um, in the event that funds were available or that interest rates were in a point where there may be a benefit to refund and lower that interest cost. Um, currently, the city has a double A-minus rating from Standard and Poor's. Um, we are recommending and do have planned that the city will have both of these bonds rated again by Standard and Poor's. Um, we don't foresee any changes, um, as we go through that process, but we will be having a call with them, um, between now and when the bond sale is. We, no surprise here, um, we do go through the city's existing debt and do look for those opportunities to refund for interest savings. And with the way rates, um, are, we do not have any, um, that we can bring forward at this time, but just be aware that we do continually monitor that and are in communication with staff. And in the event that we do find an opportunity to provide some savings on your outstanding issues, we definitely will be bringing those forward for discussion. Um, with the bonds, as I mentioned, while there are two bonds, they are on the same schedule moving forward. And so, um, if you do choose to call for the sale of the bonds this evening, we would then work with the city's bond counsel, um, Dorsey, and draft the official statement and other, um, offering documents, take those to market. Um, I would then be back here on November 13th with results from the sale that morning in our office. And, um, assuming that bids were awarded on November 13th, funds would be available on December 7th. Um, with that, I am happy to answer. Any questions you have?
Jed. Um, so this to finish off some of the projects that we've already done on the sales tax and to clean up that. We know we have more coming projects. Some of us won't be here, um, sitting at this table very likely by the next time we come to bond to either do or complete those projects, um, because we have the 15-year window to do some of those remaining projects that are out there. Where does this bonding, the current bonding that's out there, where does this leave us in position, uh, for the city to bond again once that time comes?
Um, there, we, we are not that six, between the outstanding bonds that, sales tax bonds that are, are currently, um, out there, and then this issue with the additional 600,000, there is a little bit of funds, um, available on an annual basis. We have not, we've allowed a cushion for ourselves. However, um, the amount that would be unobligated is going to be minimal, so, um, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I believe it's gonna be less than 100,000 annually. So, I, I would, um, assume based on the discussions we've had, um, with staff, there would not be another bond issue for sales tax, at least under the special legislation that was approved in 2019. But there would be a little bit of cash available for small projects.
And to further, I handed out a cash flow projection to everyone. This is based on current sales tax revenue, uh, and we're being conservative in looking at the, uh, current $1.3 million annually that we have been, uh, collecting and that that amount will, uh, stay the same. We're, uh, you'll see each year of the next five years, my projected reserve balance. Uh, that reserve balance is there for, uh, both to offset any shortfalls in sales tax revenue that may occur, or if sales tax keeps growing, that is where the funds for a future project would, would come from. As we discovered with this bond sale, we are limited to the length of the bond based on the number of years remaining that we can collect sales tax. So, a future bond would be even shorter term than 10-year. So, it may be the, uh, wiser direction to go is just, uh, continue to build up that reserve account and use that as, uh, paying for future sales tax projects.
Any other questions?
If, at the point when you're ready, um, there is a resolution that was drafted by Dorsey, your bond counsel, that, um, if you choose to do so, you could move forward with calling for the sale of the bonds.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Move to adopt resolution for, uh, bid of sale for bonds, uh, as presented. Okay, motion.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Uh, next item of business is appointment of the, uh, fire chief for our local fire department. City's policy for firefighters in standard operating guidelines, uh, says that they shall, the city council shall appoint a person fully qualified to serve as the fire chief, taking into account the recommendation of the fire department personnel. Members of the fire department met on September 26th and forwarded the recommendation to appoint Pat Shorter as chief. Mr. Shorter has served the department for more than 20 years. Chief has general supervision of the department at all times and control of, over all apparatus, equipment, supplies, and command over all person who are employees of the department. Chief reports, uh, directly to the city administrator. Uh, administration recommends the council appoint Pat Shorter to serve as fire chief.
How's it going?
It's going fine. How are you? Beautiful day.
Pat, this is your opportunity to say anything.
Status of the department, talk about yourself.
Say that again, please.
Status of the department, talk about yourself.
We are, we are going in a good direction. Steve and I have met several times. I have met with Jeff Flynn, who are working on several projects. Lori and I work on several projects. So it's, it's, it's headed the right direction. It's gonna take some time, but we're moving along.
We're in the, we're in the process of updating the, uh, personnel policy, manual standard operating, uh, and I have, uh, engaged one of our, uh, we have a, a young intern still around here for another week that has been volunteering work for a couple of months, and she's going to, uh, retype the, uh, the old documents and have them into a modern electronic version, so it'll be easier for us to edit them.
Don't have to have whiteout anymore.
No. A miniograph, uh, so, uh, and we have, uh, brought, uh, former judge, former assistant city attorney Jeff Flynn on to, uh, uh, help us rewrite that. He,
Former chief.
Former chief of the fire department and advise us on, uh, on that. So, we just got started on that here in the last week or two. So we will be bringing, uh, having an updated personnel policy manual for the fire department.
Jed? Yeah, like we brought up in budget hearings, um, there, there's no race to a finish line here, but it would be nice by budget time next year, uh, to see if there's anything to adjust or whatever. And I know, you know, there, oh, we can maybe get that done sooner. Eh, you've got a year.
I have Jeff on it now, so.
Yep.
It'll probably be a little sooner rather than later, but yes, he was right on top of it. He'd met with me twice already, so it'll, I think move wrong in a, in a steady pace. We'll do well. And his input will be very, very advantageous to our department as well.
I would like to see a, an updated compensation plan in place by the start of 2024.
Awesome.
We've spoken with, um, state auditor's office regarding that from the retirement standpoint, and that is a no-go. So we have to look at their avenues.
Yeah, we, we cannot use pension as, uh,
No merit-based benefit.
No, no merit-based benefit on the pension. It would have to come through their wages.
Payroll type of operation. It, it is because of consistency and state statute that we cannot do that. It's understandable. If you look at this in a, in a larger scale and look at all the paperwork required to maintain that, it would be a real big headache for everybody involved. So, we'll look at their avenue for that.
Move to appoint, pass orders, fire chief.
Okay. Motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat.
You guys have a good evening.
Have fun this weekend.
Congratulations. Oh, you heard about that?
Yes. Hi, Jed.
I have to pay for a wedding.
Yeah.
That's the fun part.
Okay, next item. Approve the wastewater treatment agreements with True Shine, Truck Wash, and D&amp;H Transportation Services. So the exhibit contains the proposed new sanitary sewer agreements between the city and True Shine Truck Wash and between the city and D&amp;H Transportation Services. These new agreements will replace the agreements that have been, that were first in place in April 2012. Public utility staff worked with Bolton and Mink to structure the new agreements. Proposed new agreements clarify the cost responsibilities for sampling and metering equipment, clarify the city's right to recover any fines or penalty that city might incur due to any illicit discharges attributable to non-compliance with the terms of the agreements, and address agreement renewal conditions going forward. Based on historic performance, True Shine agreements contains an increase in their CBOD5, that's carbonation, that's a five-day carbonation biochemical oxygen demand, uh, 30-day average and maximum daily limits. And D&amp;H agreement contains a decrease in their CBD, CBOD5 30-day average. True Shine and D&amp;H have agreed to the terms of the proposed new agreements. Council has requested to approve the agreements with True Shine and D&amp;H as presented and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute these agreements.
You have a motion?
Was this, uh, did Water and Light take this up? Do you recall?
No.
Were they signed or is this strictly signed by the, signed by the city?
Move to approve based on the agreements, uh, discussed with the parties.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion unseconded. Any further discussion? Uh, or, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Uh, next item is consideration of street closure for Halloween. Every year on Halloween, a large number of children and adults participate in festivities on Smith Avenue for the safety of the public. Worthington Police Department is recommending temporary closure of Smith Avenue and a portion of Clary Street. Previously approved Halloween street closures have occurred successfully without issue. The Worthington Police Department will have officers in a stand in the area to provide safety items to the children. Council action has requested to authorize closure of Smith Avenue and a portion of Clary Street on October 31st, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Case of the closure is shown on Exhibit 4.
I would, I would like, I, I think it's a neat thing, um, but I think there's a lot of burden that comes with it, too. Um, Smith has changed a lot in ownership from many of the state, uh, the, the years where it was the Mecca of, of trick-or-treating. And I think it would maybe be good for the city to send a letter and talk to the residents on Smith Avenue to see if that's still a wanted thing. And the only reason I bring it up is I know the volume, because I have friends who live there, uh, and have for a number of years, the amount, the volume of just exactly what happens. And by doing this, we somewhat set them up for, you're gonna get maybe even more volume.
The expense.
Because it is shut down.
Aren't we doing this, though, for the safety of the kids? Because it's away so busy?
I agree completely. But with the change of ownership in, in a lot of Smith Avenue, are as many participating and/or are we kind of forcing the hand, forcing the hand to one place opposed to other places spread amongst town?
Right.
I, I, I just think we owe it to the, the residents of Smith Avenue to ask them, is this something you want us to continue to do? Are you in favor or against? I would love to hear their feedback on it instead of us just assuming that it's still the same as it was for many years.
People only showing up just because?
Correct.
It's a semi.
They always shut that one street down. Well, you know, there's how many other streets that then maybe don't get near as much traffic and are more than willing? And these people maybe, I mean, we're talking thousands of, I mean, I have people that do the chalkboard tally and stuff like that that I know that live there, and it's like a thousand kids a year.
And it starts right after school gets out.
Oh, it's bonkers. It's, which, it's cool, and the fact that we shut it down i- is neat. I would just think that as a courtesy to the residents of Smith, it would be nice to survey them at, at some point, uh, from the city and whatever responses we get, we get.
Would you like that survey prior to authorizing this closure?
I don't know if we would have time.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that this year, I, I, I'm okay with it this year, um, because they all have the opportunity to turn their light off and not be there.
True.
And, and that's fine. But I do think moving forward after this, we should consider that.
Will, will the one end of Oxford be open by the time? Halloween rolls around? Do we know?
Forecast, forecast.
Same as I'm not gonna forecast when weather's gonna allow construction to start in the spring either.
Yeah, that, I mean, that will change some things quite a bit.
Yeah.
Because there, then there was, you know, a group that would have a,
They'd park over and even over in Hy-Vee.
Yeah, and walk across, and Macs used to have an activity thing that they would have there and, and stuff that, yeah, that will create a whole different scenario of getting across that and, and doing that, so. I, I'm, I'm fine with this year. I just, it's become kind of the, the norm to do it, and I think we owe it to those people to maybe just ask them.
Not make the assumption.
If you still want this, and if there's no response, they must be okay with it.
The ones that don't, don't have a light on, yeah.
Yeah, you, I mean, you can always turn the light off or.
Or put a sign out.
Or, yeah. Put a bunch of ghosts out in the front, and maybe they won't come, I don't know.
I think that would draw them in.
Yeah.
Move to authorize closure.
I'll second.
Motion unseconded. Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I do think we should say a thank you to the people of Smith Avenue, because it is a pretty unique thing in a community to have a two-block area like that that is Halloween Mecca.
Uh, nominee committee met on September 28th making the following recommendations for committee appointments or reappointments. Memorial Auditorium, reappoint Beth Habich to a three-year term going through July 2026. Cross-cultural Advisory Committee, appoint Josie Maroken to serve during the school year from September 1, and note that that should say August 31 as the student rep. On the Charter Commission, appoint Matt Kennedy to replace Marty Ricker, who passed away. Appoint Andy Johnson to replace Elwin Egan. Reappoint Zubi Jansen. Reappoint Melissa Elsine. Reappoint Glenn Thurgood. Reappoint Jay Vargas. Reappoint Lon Lean. All these terms expire on March 31st of 2027. Water and Light Commission, appoint Mike Fury to replace Randy Thompson, who resigned. That term runs through March 31st of 2026. And on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, appoint Salvador Adame to fill the unexpired term of Marty Rickers, who passed away. That term expires on October 31st of 2023.
Um, is that, is that date right?
Yeah. It is because he, he'll fill the unexpired term of Marty, so then we'll have to, he'll have to be a finding for a first.
Gotcha, okay. And he's agreed to that? Otherwise, okay.
That's what I'm told.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, budget amendment regarding the dispatch position. We have budgeted a sixth dispatcher beginning in 2024. We've had five dispatch hiring processes in the past year and twice did not get a qualified candidate that could pass the background check. Qualified candidate has recently reached out to us and is available to participate in the hiring process to potentially fill the position before the end of this year 2023. Because of recent dispatch staff shortages, funding is available to cover the added expense of the position for the remainder of 2023. Considering the recent hiring difficulties, staff recommends moving forward with the hiring process as soon as possible to avoid missing out on hiring a qualified candidate. Council action is requested to approve the budget amendment.
Is this number six? This one, if, if hired, would this one be number six?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes.
Jed? Have we ever reached out to, I, I know we've got several retired officers still living in the community that retired. Have we ever reached out to any of them to see if they'd be willing to be fill-ins that? And the only reason I bring it is up, bring that up is the fact that they have tons of experience in dealing with the dispatch situation, the pressures, the situations and everything that, I know we have several that are around town. Is that ever anything we've addressed or done?
I've never reached out to any of them. I don't.
Yeah. I just didn't know in, in those times where maybe there's a fill and a need, that would take a lot less to maybe have a list of some of those retired officers who have.
This may be something that you need to be working on a regular basis, not just on a.
Yeah.
There's a lot to dispatch.
Oh, yeah.
More than.
Yep.
You have any idea? I would move to approve the budget amendment for the dispatch position.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion unseconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I only have one item, and that's the Center for Active Living bid recommendation. Bits for the Cal Improvement Project were opened on Sept- on September 7th of 2023. There was only one bid submitted from Tri-State General Contracting in the amount of $376,923 for the base bid and additional $65,233 for alternate one, which is the meeting room additions to make one of the corpse meeting room. S E H, our architects on the project, estimated the probable base bid to be at $258,850. The one bid that we did receive was approximately 40% over that estimated cost. Due to it being an insurance claim from water damage, staff along with the justice from the League of Minnesota Cities, our insurance agents, reviewed the bids and feel that council's best course of action would be to reject Tri-State's bid and rebid the project. Staff is hoping that with some changes to the bid process, we will be able to entice more bidders and get better results. Included in your packet is a recommendation from our architect and a bid tab from September's bid opening. Council action is requested to take action on the one-received bid and if rejected, authorize staff to rebid the project. One thing I will say is that the League of Minnesota Cities agreed that if the, if the city wants to take the one bid and approve that, they are okay with that. We, we think that if we do a little changing to our advertising and bid from online, only online bidding to some, to a combination of online and in-person, we're hoping that we can maybe get more bids. But they are aware also that, that doesn't necessarily mean if we rebid this, it's gonna be cheaper, so council action is requested.
Questions?
As Todd explained, the, the league will honor that bid and pay that full insurance cost. My thought is, the, the league has always treated us well, and they've always stood behind us on any insurance claims, and I think we should treat them the same. And we think this bid was unnecessarily high, unusually high, and that going through the rebidding process, we hope to get a more competitive environment. The league understands that rebidding it does not ensure that the, any bids will come in lower, so.
What's the urgency of the project?
Well, in talking to Brian Berkstrom from S E H, we think that if we rebid it, we wanna rebid it as soon as possible because we think it's a good winter project and try, we think we'll get our best bids. We, right now, don't have any racquetball courts available. While they're not used very heavily, that was part of the Cal, so we don't have any, but, you know, we're.
Would delaying it cause further damage?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
So, it's not urgent?
No, we, we've got the roof fixed. The water damage problems are fixed. This is the repairs from the water damage.
I would move to re, rebid it as, as suggested. Reject the bid and rebid the project.
There you go.
Got a motion unseconded to reject the bid? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Any further discussion? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. I have just one item here, and this is a variance appeal for 1260 27th Street. So, on October 3rd, this past Tuesday, the Planning Commission, serving as the Board of Zoning Appeals, considered a variance application submitted by J B Brook Properties for property located at 1260 27th Street. The applicant sought approval of a variance to allow for a staircase and landing to extend three feet eight inches into the required 10-foot side setback. After holding a public hearing and discussion, the Board of Zoning Appeals unanimously denied their request, and I'll say it was a four to zero, we were missing a few members, but it was a quorum. Their denial was based primarily on their belief that the property was not unique based on the state's three-factor test for practical difficulties. The board determined that the request was more of a result of the applicant's preferences and that they did not establish a practical difficulty in complying with the side setback requirement. I'd add, the minutes are included in the packet, so hopefully you read through those. I think the discussion a lot centered around some other options that they thought might work and things of that nature. And then after I go through this, I'm sure Chris can add more to what the Planning Commission discussed, if you want. So, the property is currently zone B3, general business district, and requires a 10-foot side setback. This setback applies to any structure, which is defined as any building or any piece of work artificially built up or composed of parts joined together in some definite manner, the use of which requires permanent location on the ground or attachment to something having a permanent location on the ground. The proposed site plan can be seen in exhibit 1B, so you're looking at a little staircase there, kind of where it says remove bush, if you're looking at that. I'll kind of skip through, hopefully you had a chance to read a lot of this. And then I know it's been a while since we had a variance appeal, so I'll go through Minnesota Statute 462 357 subdivision 6. Says that the applicant must satisfy the three-factor test for practical difficulties and that the requested variance must be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. This three-factor test is the main thing that the commission looks at with any variance request. The first of the three is that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the zoning ordinance. This one is usually pretty easy to get by. This one's a pretty reasonable use of the property there, especially with the staircase being there for an emergency access door. Number two, this one is usually what denies almost all variances. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. This one generally referred to as the uniqueness factor focuses on whether the request for variance stems from conditions specific to the property or whether the request stems from the applicant's own preference or desires. This one you're usually looking at, is the lot weirdly shaped? Is there some kind of terrain that would prohibit them from complying with the zoning ordinance? Is there certain wetlands or natural features that need to be protected, things of that nature? And then three, the variance, if granted, will not alter the character of the area. So, a photo of the site and then the stairs and landing can be seen in exhibit 1 to see, so you can kind of see in that photo, imagine the building on the right there going out a lot closer there, and then the staircase kind of right beside that, so. With that, I will note here, in the original case item presented to the Planning Commission, staff did recommend denial based on the, the second factor, that three-factor test. And then a statement of appeal from the applicant is attached as exhibit 1D. The applicant is present here if you choose to let him speak as well. Council action is requested on the appeal. Please note, it does require a forfeits vote to alter or rescind the Board of Zoning Appeals decision.
Questions, discussion?
The only thing I would really add, Matt covered most of it. We did, the Planning Commission did, I took a lot of time in, in considering the variance request. I, I think you know, the Planning Commission, they, they try to, when possible, be able to say yes in, in most cases, and, and they, and the, the struggle was the same here. The, the contemplation was trying to find a part of this that is unique, that would satisfy specifically that uniqueness clause or standard when going to approve a variance. And generally, there wasn't one found. There were number of, a couple of options that while we were sitting there listening, and it's always great to see Pat here, and, and about a number of options were, possibilities were voiced about maybe placement, a, a different placement of the exit door, whether it's to the front or still off to the side, but at ground level, and, and basically putting the, the exit, the staircase internally. You'd square off the building, you wouldn't have that staircase sitting outside in the weather, at, just a simple fix. So, there are options to address the, the thing that's causing, that's asking for the variance. So, that's kind of where, that's kind of where the Planning Commission was at, that there's a, that the, that there's options available and, and the issue is basically based on the, on the planning of the building, so.
This could probably present problems in the future as far as other additions or?
Well, it encroaches into this, into the setback of, of the property. Not that it's out of line, it's not a, it's not gaudy, it's not, it's not gonna be, it's not an eyesore on any, anything else, but if at this point you, if there's options to be able to stay in compliance, those are, and as far as the Planning Commission, we don't, we're not, we're not there to look at the dollar amount that it might cost. We're there to look at compliance within the regulations that present, that's presented to us. And, yeah, we just could not find anything unique regarding the, the variance request and the property to be able to approve it.
Comments, anybody else?
I know that it's not something that you want to hear, but, you know, when it comes to getting emergency services in and things like that, a lot of times, that's why these rules are in place. So, although I wish we could say, you know, it's just a staircase and that, you know, it's something that's not attached to the building and someday could be removed in an emergency scenario, they can't, it's not something that can easily be altered or taken off.
So... The, so I think the way I understand it from Matt, I have met two of the three obligations, correctly. And the way, then if I understand it the way Chris explains it, the second one that I have not proven to meet is an irregular lot, a wetland, a special circumstance that apparently I'm not meeting. So, in my letter that I wrote, and I, I've taken a lot of pictures, a couple options that Chris talks about, about putting the staircase inside, there is a cost, and I know that's not your concern or the P and Z's concern. But it's not only a cost of building it and pouring it inside, but you also then I lose square footage to lease back to the leaser. And the second option was to put the staircase on the south side of the building where the docks are, and doing that creates a hazard really of snow removal, a, a snow truck hitting it, that plow truck that hits it, or even the delivery trucks, the route trucks, that Frito-Lay uses on the property. And somebody coming down out into the snow path might not know where they're coming out on the east side of the building would have a safer impact. The door was put in for an, an easier escape out of the building, and now that we have a new fire chief, it'd be interesting for public opinion from him. He would have no public opinion on building codes. Okay. Originally, we, we thought the main door where the check-in room is was an exit, and then the two garage doors that are currently on the building for deliveries, truck deliveries, would be an exit door. But then we had an inspection by Frito-Lay, which is general, and they recommended putting another door in. And the reasons why, if we'd have electrical outlet or electrical power failure. And the reasons why, if we'd have electrical outlet, or electrical power failure, those doors are run by electricity. And then, you might scramble in confusion at trying to pull the emergency release, which is possible, but then you have to lift up an eight-by-ten or eight-by-twelve garage door. So, it was highly recommended, and that's what we put the staircase in. Being a commercial area, I'm on the city limits line, 27th Street. To the north of us is completely farmland, county. To the south of me, we have about 180 feet from the front of my building to our property line, and then setbacks for whatever future building would happen. To the west of me is my property, another 55, let's see, excuse me, it's 85 feet to the west, and then that's going to be an entryway drive to get to the south property, and then the industrial part. And then, on the east, where the staircase will sit, is up against Hog Slat. So, we'll have their setback of 10 feet, my setback of 10 feet, actually it's 10 feet four inches, and then my building will start, but I'd like to request the variance to put the staircase. It's a metal staircase, I had it powder coated, I know weather was talked about, I had it powder coated for the fact that it is going to be outside, rain, sleet, snow. I had it specially built with grades for non-slipage, for feet to walk on, shoes, boots. It's not, you know, visibly visible as somebody's driving down 27th Street, it's going to be between the building. There is never any foot traffic in retail, or, you know, any type of parks and recreation or anything like that. There's no reason for the public or even anybody being out there. So, you know, I've talked to the Hog Slat people, and I won't use the wording they said to use, but they have no issues with it, and it's been posted, I wrote that in there, and I haven't heard anything. And I think, you know, the state of Minnesota, the city of Worthington, Worthington gives the applicant an opportunity to apply for a variance, and because there could be a different discussion, a different thought, and that's why I went ahead and applied for it. And that's why I'm denying it, to use that opportunity. So, I don't know if you'd like to see, I stood at the end of the building, and you probably won't be able to see this, but I stood at the 60 feet at the end of the building, and I took a picture of what you're going to see. And I stood back at the property line, which is another 50 feet from the building, that was the setback there, and took a picture. You can see the staircase hardly, and then I went to right at the road. So, if somebody was driving by to the east, a passenger or anybody looking, you'd really have to squint to see it. And then, probably not the smartest thing I did, I stood in the middle of the road and took a picture real quick, because the cement trucks go by pretty quick there, and the gravel trucks. And with the buildings being closer and the actual staircase blending in with the building and the landscape, you know, the area, as a commercial area, it's hardly noticeable. And I think it has a lot of features to be there. Yes, Chad?
Chad, yes. I don't, there's no question at all about the, "Does it look unappealing?" None of that. The basis is, if we had setbacks that weren't needed and weren't there for a reason, then everybody'd squeeze their garage two feet a little bit wider because it'd be easier. Everybody would, you know, push their deck out just a little bit further, and it might be because the neighbor doesn't care, you know, give two hoots. That's maybe closer to the words that you may be heard from neighbors.
That was worse than that.
Yeah, no, I just said closer. But the concern of what the neighbors think and stuff isn't the concern.
I understand.
The visual of what is there isn't the concern. It's the precedent that if we allow setbacks to be changed, and what's the point of having the setback for the reasons of safety of if that building, heaven forbid, has a fire or something in it, and they need to get a piece of equipment in there to better equip extraction or fire put out, or whatever may be the situation, is there enough room then to do it? Are we allowing for those things to happen? By defeating those, that's the part that comes into question as to why we had setbacks. It's not personal, it's not visual, it's not any of those things, it's the setback set for things like that, that very well maybe never happen. But if there's another option, it may cost more for snow removal.
But it's not, it's not the cost, it's the safety.
But you said it.
No, the cost of putting the staircase inside the building.
Yep.
Is the cost. But this is, this east side of the building, of the property that is in discussion, is not the entryway into the building.
But it could be the emergency exit.
Well, then...
For the building.
Well, for people, for foot traffic, for employee, but for equipment like a fire truck or, I'm not going to argue the case, but they'd have to go through a ditch, you know, and if it was winter, there would definitely be issues of getting stuck.
Elena?
Do all commercial properties have a 10-foot setback on these sides?
I'm not sure. Yeah, yeah, please do.
All properties that are Zoned B3, which is pretty much every single one outside of the downtown area, except for like two or three.
They all have the 10-foot setback?
Yeah, now there's a lot that, you know, they've been zoned that way well after they were built. So, you know, there's a lot of buildings, like on Oxford Street especially, that don't come anywhere close to meeting that, but they were built decades and decades ago, and then they've just been kind of grandfathered in as zoning regulations have changed over the years, so.
The other hard part, I guess I have in this, and just, I'm going to be right up front and honest, Pat, you had more room before the Hog Slat project, and that alone, knowing that there's a 10-foot setback and doing that, that now we come into play that because you have the opportunity to expand, and there are other options, makes it a little bit tougher even, because there was the opportunity there at X point in time.
And that is true. And four years ago, my property stopped with the 30 feet, and I purchased with this anticipation of...
Yeah.
Having the low, before Hog Slat was ever coming.
That's what, that's what I'm saying is...
And I did, I did that. I bought another 25 feet from the city, and I'm paying the assessment on it for the road improvements.
Yep.
And so, I bought it for that, and, you know, I'm very thankful that the Frito-Lay Corporation is wanting to expand here.
No doubt.
I mean, I think it's a great opportunity. There was comment maybe that I wanted to get the horse first and then go after the car, or the cart first and then after the horse, at the P&amp;Z meeting, and that was completely wrong. I mean, that is a non-true statement at all, or even a suggestion. There was never any intent on my personal side that that would happen. The drawing that you see there is a drawing that Larry Mick, who drew the original drawings that was approved, drew, and he just wrote the staircase in there. We had no intentions that, we didn't know that, that it couldn't sit there. Currently, the staircase is not attached to the building. I don't plan to attach it to the building. The wind, the snow, the amount of people that would walk on it, it hasn't moved an eighth of an inch, because of some of the strength of it and the weight of it. But if I backed my pickup up against it, it would move right off the pads. I brought it in my pickup to bring it here.
Will you address this in the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the, as, like I said, we try to come at many angles on this, and whether the staircase could be considered temporary or whatever like that, but if you, if you put a door four foot off the ground meant to be an exit, whether that the staircase itself is temporary fixed or not fixed, and whether it's cement or attached to the wall, it ends up being a permanent staircase because you have that door there meant as an exit.
You sure can't leave that door available without a staircase next to it.
I wouldn't want to.
Because if somebody fell off it, then it's somebody else's.
Right.
Have a big sign inside, "Don't jump."
Yeah.
Right. So, I only, I mention that because we do, we did consider, tried to consider multiple angles on this, and it just couldn't come out.
I'm just looking at, Chad and I do respect your opinions and stuff about like somebody with a deck wanting to move another foot, or a garage another foot. And I think the variance opportunity for whoever's applying for the, applying for the building permit, every situation has to be looked at, at, you know, a practical look. And in this situation, I, I don't see where the negative, the negative could really come. I just, I just feel like I'm already established there, we have the building, we have the building to the east of us, there won't be one to the north of us unless it's across the road, and then to the south of us, who knows what will happen there, but that's 100 to 200 yards away, across the parking lot even.
Part of that is, though, if you go three foot seven inches, I think it was, into the setback, then we've set that precedence, and then Hog Slat comes to us and they say, "We want to do it too." And then, they also put it there, and then we're talking about emergency services and some of those necessary, I know you're saying that they can't drive there, but I guarantee they've done it before, not at your location, but other ones. So, that's where I would say, although, looking at this, I wish that we could have a different outcome, I just, I don't, I think that we have those three factors that the Planning Commission looked at for a reason, and I don't think we'll be able to do anything else.
Is there any other exits other than this one for emergency?
Yes, on the west side is an entryway for the employees to come in, and there's a check-in room. It's about a 15-by-20 room with the bathroom in it.
The back or the front of the building?
It's on the west, northwest corner of the building, so when you come off of 27th, come in the drive, it's right there on the northwest corner. So, that's where they come, and then they come out of a door in that check-in room into the warehouse.
Where I'm going with this anyways, it's the ones at one corner, the southeast is in the northwest corner, and you've got all that in between there that, you know, it's a lot of space in case if you are using those for emergency exits, that maybe, I would myself probably put one in the middle of the doors in the back, you know, and have a step inside the building going out at ground level, and have the steps inside of that.
Yeah.
Because that, that way, you know, again, even with fire department's entry, you know, they're going either one corner or the other, and they still have a lot of place to travel again, powers out, you know, and...
I agree with putting it in the middle, but if you have four trucks lined up at all four dock doors, is personnel from fire and rescue going to know there's a door in the center?
Yes, because it will have to say exit above it.
Well, it will, but, I mean, on the outside, does it say exit?
That I'll let the fire chief comment on.
We would find a way in.
Yeah, they would find a way in through...
Whatever means we can find.
A window or a door?
We go to, say, we do a 360, assess the situation, and try to make entry wherever is feasible to...
Yeah, and the most feasible, in my opinion, would be the northwest corner, because that's the first place you'll see a window and a door. That way, I would be...
Well, it depends where you have an incident, you know, that, we don't know what incident's going to be for any at all, so, you know, to elaborate on that, it's really impossible because we don't know what's going to happen. Again, I would maintain that we will gain access wherever is required to do whatever needs to be done.
Access.
Whether it be a fire or a person trapped, or wherever it may be.
Chad, the access from the fire department, they're going to go where they need to go if that means they need to cut a hole in the wall.
Right.
Or tear a door out.
But where a person needs to get out of that building in an emergency exit situation, that's where this comes into play more than anything. And to make that an option means that there's, the setbacks there for the space that is And there are options in other places.
I move to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of the variance.
Okay, we have a motion seconded.
I would second it.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to counsel reports. I don't have much. I was at Mayor's meeting up in Marshall here this last Thursday, just kind of had a little bit of roundtable discussion on cannabis, and we got to tour the Ralco building that they've been renovating in Marshall. They've stuck about $19 million into that, kind of like our Thompson, they've got a wedding venue and a nice formal dining, and the bank is there looking at some different businesses to go in there as well. Also attended the Romo community festivities, actually Steve and I were there for a little bit, and had quite a few people from different areas like Minneapolis, North Dakota and stuff, you know, a couple of them were part of the African Economic Development Committee out of Minneapolis anyways, so exchanged some business cards, so sounded like maybe an invite to Minneapolis sometime in the future anyways, so, that's all I have.
I don't have anything.
Amy?
The Compensation Committee met with the people that proposed new health insurance proposals this, this time around. It will not, depending on which direction we go, will not go up excessively this year, so we'll be under budget.
Chris?
Yes, Compensation Committee, and then you heard the last case, which took up a good part of our time at Planning and Zoning, and then did, had her review and input time regarding our comprehensive plan, which we will be getting to, is that this week? At our special meeting on Wednesday? So, that, yep, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Elena?
Just a reminder that the rescheduled Nobles County Town Hall meeting, organized by First Children's Finance, is on Wednesday. It's at 6:00 PM, so you could go straight here from our special council meeting to that one, if you're interested. We did kind of pass the RCP timeline, but they said that they have ordered extras, so if anyone wants to attend, please feel free to come, learn what we're trying to do with childcare, to open up some new spots in the county, and that's it.
Okay, Chad?
I went to the Senate Housing and Homeless Prevention Committee. We had a group of senators here to talk about our issues specifically that deal with market rate housing in this community, and the struggles that not only we, but what I feel is most anybody in outstate Minnesota have to abide by. You've given away over $800,000 back because it just doesn't pencil out, won't pencil out, isn't going to pencil out when the federal government gives grants and puts standards in that can't be met. So, we expressed that, they talked about some of the different programs that may help in those situations, and we had many employers, some of the biggest, most of the biggest employers in the community at the meeting, and I think it was voices well heard that can go back to the leadership of why we just can't seem to get anything done out here, because a lot of the points that were brought up and a lot of things we said was, you have to realize, we are not Metro Minnesota. We do not have those same standards and asking for a gradient scale of some of those requirements to move as the further you get from the metro areas, especially in our situation where we're 40 miles from one border and 11 from another, and you watch projects and things just walk across the road. things just walk across the road, so to speak. I think those sentiments were heard by the senators that were at the meeting, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Chad. Steve?
Yeah, and just to continue with that, Scott McMahon with the Greater Minnesota Partnership, who organized that meeting, happened to call me this afternoon and kind of report back. Both of the senators that were here were quite taken with the testimony of the people that were there, and the chair of that committee, actually to Scott's surprise, mentioned that we need to address this prevailing wage issue, which has been a, something, a topic that could never be discussed in the past, so maybe we'll actually see some progress on that, but he was, he was very complimentary about the presentation that was put together and the people that were there and had a similar experience when they went onto Wyndham, that addressing the issues exactly as they were hoping that they would be addressed. So tomorrow, there's a Lake Minnesota Cities Regional Meeting in Wyndham, I'll be, I'll be there for a couple of hours in the afternoon. Reminder of the special council meeting Wednesday afternoon, and we're, that's the one where we're going to review the comprehensive plan, correct, Matt?
Yeah.
We have so many special meetings, I have to know which agenda I need to look at.
Part of it, yeah.
And Thursday, we're going to be participating in interviews for the executive director of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, so we'll, we have offered our assistance to the somewhat depleted board of directors that they have at this point, so we're, I think we have at least one interview lined up for Thursday afternoon. That's all I have.
Okay. Entertainer motion.
adjourned.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.